Good evening. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on April 2, 2024 at 6 o'clock PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20F so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. For the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of minutes. I believe we have one set.
Yep.
Are you ready to proceed?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 28, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well. Next on the agenda is police officer interviews. Potential candidates, Dylan T. Leary, Aaron S. Richardson, and Robert Patrick Sullivan. And we have Police Chief David Jones with us. Do you want to call them in, or... Okay.
So, as we're waiting, so we just did a motion for minutes March 28.
Oh.
But the minutes are actually March 26.
Yeah. Let's do that over.
So I think we need a new motion, Bill.
Vote this at 28.
I know.
It does.
I would...
April fools.
I've been drawing my previous motion to make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 26, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well. Thank you, Joe, for catching that. Excellent. Welcome. Come on up. Chief, do you want to explain the process?
Sure.
Good evening.
So we have three candidates coming before you tonight for interviews to the Select Board. They've already been through their background investigations, successfully passed by our Detective Division. They've had a police panel interview just last week, which they also all successfully passed, and now they're before you all for an interview tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. And this is a responsibility that the Select Board undertakes in our role as Police Commissioner, and it's certainly an important one, so thank you for bringing the candidates forward. So welcome, Dylan.
He doesn't want to be by himself.
We're here for moral support. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? And then we have a series of questions. We will ask the same questions to each candidate in an effort of, to be fair, but certainly if my colleagues have follow-up questions, feel free to ask. But go ahead.
Of course. I'm Dylan Leary. I'm 27 years old. I was born and raised here in Hingham. Went to Hingham Public Schools my entire life. Graduated the high school in 2016, where I went to Merrimack College for a year, and then went to UMass Boston and finished there for three years. I majored in criminal justice with a minor in psychology. Upon completion of college, it was during COVID, so I had a little bit of a layoff for a few months. I went to the, excuse me, the Reserve Intermittent Basic Academy down in Plymouth. Upon graduation of that, I became a special police officer in the Town of Hingham, where I did that through the beginning of the summer.
Excellent. How was that experience?
It was unbelievable. Really opened my eyes to really clarify that this is what I want to do with my life.
Excellent. Excellent. Bill, do you want to start?
Sure. So it's great to see that you have experience working as a special police officer. I think that bodes very well for your candidacy, so welcome and thank you for your application.
Thank you for your time.
I have two questions for you. I'm going to ask the same applicant both of these questions. My first question is, what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
More or less, it's being a good human. You have to have compassion, understanding. You have to be very ethical and moral. And working with the community shouldn't feel like a job that should come easy to you, especially when you're a member of the community that you work for.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent.
Do I do one each and go ahead?
Sure. Joe?
Thanks for being here. You and the department fill such a valuable and important role in the community, and as you can tell, we take this very seriously, and we are really thankful for your commitment to the town and for applying for this position. My first question is, how would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
I believe I'm a very good communicator because I pride myself on my ability to listen, which is the most important part of communication. I really work on my communication skills by just trying to interact with as many people as possible and as many circumstances as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. And what quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation where you demonstrated that quality?
I would say the ability to empathize with someone. When I was working with the Department as a special, there are many times where someone was having a rough day and, you know, working a detail and the roads closed at the end of their street, working with the crews and with them to get them back to their house instead of having to take a longer way around just because you could tell they're having a really bad day and they just want to go home.
Yes, definitely. Certainly, we've seen that we have a mental health crisis, and quite often, the Hingham Police Department is the front line to that, so that's a really important point. Bill, do you want to go with the next question?
Sure. So you could apply to be a police officer with any department of the South Shore. Why do you want to be specifically with the Hingham Police Department?
First and foremost, it's home. What better place to serve than your own community that you've grown up in, love? It's... You know, you've learned everything there is to know about the town and the people, and once you get that understanding of everyone, you wouldn't want to work anywhere else.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
That's great. How are you in dealing with stressful situations? And can you give an example, a specific example, of how you have dealt with a stressful situation other than this meeting right now?
I believe I handle stress pretty well compared to a lot of people. I do my best not to let anything rile me up. It's, of course, difficult, but just trying to stay grounded and breathing your way through it and remembering that it's not the end of the world. There's always going to be a tomorrow. My first time working a detail for this town was the Fourth of July a few years ago. I had someone come up to me very agitated about parking and everything. You know, the radio's already going because there's 100 people trying to get help. Having to... Not that I had to deal with myself, but feeling the responsibility that, you know, it's the first time really interacting with someone, like, figure it out. And just staying grounded through that, speaking as calmly as possible, and finally helping the person resolve their parking issues. I just staying grounded and level-headed.
That's great. Thank you.
Good. And what skills do you have that you think would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
I would say my ability to connect with people in this town, knowing about the culture of everyone in this town and how people expect to be interacted with and knowing how to actually interact with them. Every town has a unique culture, and by living here my whole life, I feel like I've begun to understand that culture much better than most people.
Excellent. Excellent. Just curious, was the criminal justice course at the high school when you were there?
It was. I took that for a year, two years, for the officer board.
Excellent. Excellent. Good. Well, thank you again for applying and for being here. Do you have any questions for us?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do you... Anything you want to add that we haven't highlighted?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, although I do notice that as we asked the questions, I could see that at least the Chief was thinking, was answering those questions for himself. So you're not alone here in going through the process.
Thank you.
But thank you. This was very helpful.
Excellent. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're Aaron?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, welcome. Thank you for applying and thank you for being here. We'll ask a series of questions, the same questions that we're asking the other candidates in an effort to be fair. Certainly, if you have any questions for us, you can ask them at the end. But if you want to kick it off, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. My name's Aaron. I'm 23. I grew up in Hingham my entire life. I've been surrounded by family in law enforcement more directly. My grandfather, Bud Thorn, was a Sitewatt police officer for quite some time, and my cousin currently is a sergeant with Hull Police Department, Andrew Riley. I attended Hingham Public Schools, then continued my college education with the University of New Hampshire, and eventually transferred to UMass Boston where I graduated with my major in criminal justice and criminology and a minor in psychology and sociology, as well as being a part of the National Criminal Justice Honor Society.
Excellent. Excellent. Bill, do you want to start?
Sure.
I didn't realize that you were Bud Thorn's grandson. I've known your grandfather for many, many years. He was, for many years, he ran the Babe Ruth baseball program of his own.
Yeah.
He started it, and wonderful guy. And he was a longtime police officer as well, correct?
Yeah.
In Sitewatt?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. So it's great to see that you're aspiring and following in his footsteps.
Yeah, he's taught me a lot.
He's a wonderful guy. All right. My first question for you is, you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. What makes you want to be a member of the Hingham Police Department?
So, like I've said, I've grown up here my entire life, and really being a part of the community that helped raise me, I couldn't find any more, anything else more desirable to be able to give back to the community that helped raise me. And me, myself, being a child going to the Touch of Trucks, the family event on Cronin Field, getting to see all the law enforcement figures I looked up to and reminded me of my family members, it would be a tremendous honor to be a part of this department, the work they do that's so good in this town.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Joe?
So you also did the Touch of Trucks.
Yes.
Kids love that. That was a highlight. How would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
I would say I'm fairly good with my communication skills. I'd say on a scale of 1 to 10, a nine. And given that, I've grown up as well with a brother with cerebral palsy, and more recently, a little cousin who's six years old now with autism. And so I would say a lot of, an aspect in communication is being able to understand people's backgrounds and how they think and feel, and I feel like it's working with people with disability, understanding how to communicate with them, and when it's a proper time to help them or let them do it on their own so they feel just as valued. And as well as working on Nantucket with their police department as a community service officer, I understood and gained skills into communicating with the community as a member of the police department out there.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. What quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation where you demonstrated that quality?
I would say having good discretion, as well as being hardworking, and being able to be a calm figure for the community. So a good example of me being a hardworking individual would be me going to work every day. I currently work as a carpenter around the South Shore in Hingham, Cohasset, Sitewatt, where just the other day I was moving a 500-pound steel beam with my coworkers, so I feel like that took some hard work.
And teamwork?
Yeah. And as well as being a calm representative of the community, working out in Nantucket, my main purpose out there was to build a positive relationship with the community, but as well as be as a first responder. So I had responded to many medical situations out there where you respond and an individual may be injured in a light way or a very severe way, and their family members are very concerned from anywhere to just asking questions or having a panic attack. And I felt like I was able to be a good presence, handle the situation while being able to calm down the family members or friends in the situation.
Excellent. That's certainly a very valuable skill, and our police officers are often the front line in those situations. Bill?
So community policing is a big part of the Hingham Police Department. In fact, I would submit to you that our community policing program is probably one of the best in the state. What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
Communication and being able to listen. So communicating to the public. You're going to deal with people with different diversities, backgrounds in life, and so everyone's going to have their own way of thinking because they have their own life story. So being able to take that into account, listen to them, and really respond to them in the way they want to be responded to, but at the same time relay your message you're trying to get across in an appropriate manner that leaves both parties feeling as a positive interaction.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Joe?
So you mentioned panic attacks. And so my next question is really, how are you dealing with stressful situations? And, you know, give us another example of how you deal with stressful situations.
So as a law enforcement figure, I think it's very important, and myself and how I carry myself, to be very calm in any given situation. And one example would be out in Nantucket, I responded to a medical situation where an elderly woman had fallen off a curb and had hit her head and had a gash in the back of her head. And alongside my partners out there, we responded. And while maintaining, and this was also right outside an ice cream shop, so there's a large crowd, maintaining proper distance for the individual while at the same time communicating with their family that everything's all right. We held pressure to the wound until EMS got there, and we worked alongside EMS to treat her as best as we could and as fast as we could. And I assisted in EMS getting her on the gurney and the ambulance, and we assured the crowd that everything was all right, and she turned out to be perfectly fine.
Great. Thank you.
Good. What skills do you have that you feel would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
I would say my communication skills and, like I've touched upon, being able to understand people from different backgrounds. Touching back on my brother with cerebral palsy, ever since I was a child, I've been assisting my family and him, deal with his everyday life, whether that was helping him get ready in the morning for school, for work. And I would say that's a background that not many people really take into account that as a law enforcement officer, you're going to encounter all type of backgrounds in life, different diversities, and it's very important to have a wide perspective and really understand everyone's backgrounds, which it, no one's going to be perfect, but it's best to be as good as you can. And I still work on it today, every day, and I would say my brother's influence on me and what he has taught me has really helped me shape me into the person I am today.
Excellent. Yeah, certainly a unique perspective. Wonderful. And any other questions?
No, just really an observation. I think what you're talking about is something that each member of the department works on, on a daily basis, because you don't know going into a situation, the background of the person. You may have an expectation, which could be right, could be wrong. So I think you've really narrowed in on something that's very important, so thanks for commenting on that.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Does your brother David still work over at Hingham, Rick?
Yes, he does. He's down there right now.
One of the most popular employees.
I know. I worked alongside him, and I was never favored over him.
Excellent. Do you have any questions for us or anything you want to add?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say thank you for having me. It's a tremendous honor to be in front of all of you in the police department, and I'm really just glad that I've gotten to this point and given the opportunity to present myself.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Hi, nice to meet you. So we will ask a series of questions, the same questions we've asked the other candidates in an effort to be fair, and there may be follow-up questions, and certainly you can ask questions as well. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name is Robert Sullivan. I'm 26 years old. I was born and raised here in town. For schooling, I went to Boston College High School for high school, and then afterwards attended the College of the Holy Cross in Worcester, where I earned my undergraduate degree in environmental studies. Since going to college, I have worked for the past three and a half years as an environmental consultant at a local environmental firm here in town. I've also had the opportunity to work for eight years throughout my life at various positions at the South Shore Country Club, and for the past seven years, I have also worked as an assistant harbor master with the Town of Hingham. I'm also, fun fact, am an Eagles scout.
Go ahead, Bill.
So Bobby, great to see you here. Just wanted to say, you know, your family has given some great services to this community, and it's wonderful to see you following in your mom and dad's footsteps with your application here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Also note that you were assistant harbor master for many years, and you've done some great work for the town already, so great to have you here. My first question is for you. You could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. What makes you want to be a Hingham police officer?
Growing up here in town, here in Hingham, I realized just how much I truly care for this community and the people in it. And through the past seven years of serving as an assistant harbor master with the Town of Hingham, I've had the opportunity to continue that service to the boaters and the individuals on the waterways throughout town. I look forward to the ability to extend that onto land side and continue helping those who need assistance and throughout our entire community.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Joe?
I'm up. So how would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
I personally believe I am a very good communicator, and in order to advance my communication skills, over the past seven years, I've had the great opportunity to work alongside our harbor master, Ken Corson, in regards to writing grants, regarding, my apologies, writing grants, reports, as well as briefings in terms of situations going on the harbor. And I've had the great opportunity to have those reports and briefings edited by harbor master Corson and reviewed, and which allows me, each time I write something new, to have that opportunity to do better.
That's great, and he has been very successful in the grant procuring world, so thank you for your work there.
Thanks.
He's a good mentor. Bill? Oh, no, I didn't do mine. What quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation where you demonstrated that quality?
I think an important quality for a police officer in any type of situation is the ability to make level-headed decisions in a stressed environment. An example of when that occurred in my own life was in 2020, when I, along with other harbor masters here in town, responded to the possible missing swimmer in the Hingham Inner Harbor. Thankfully, that scenario had a good ending. However, during that situation, I was tasked with the responsibility of communicating not only with other law enforcement agencies from in town, as well as the fire department, but I've also had the, I also had the opportunity to communicate with out-of-town agencies, such as Hull Harbor Master and the Williamus Harbor Master, the Environmental Police, and the United States Coast Guard.
Excellent. Yes, that's a great experience, and yes, had a happy ending, thankfully. Bill?
So the Hingham Police Department's community policing program has really become the cornerstone of the department, and it really is one of the best community policing programs in the state. What kind of skills do you think police officers need to make community policing work in this community?
In my personal opinion, I believe an important quality that every police officer has is empathy and is compassion for the other person. And that, to me, is a cornerstone of community policing. In order to have empathy for the other person and all those involved in the situation, you can understand and be able to listen to their needs and what is going on in their lives at that point, which may be one of, if not the lowest times in their life. And it is critical and very important that we listen to those individuals and meet them where they are so that we can build a strong relationship with them.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Joe?
Good. So I'm going to pick up with something that you touched on before, namely, how are you in dealing with stressful situations? I mean, you talked before about someone who is potentially drowning, but can you give another example of how you dealt with a stressful situation, and really how you self-assess yourself in dealing with stress?
I believe I am very well, very good in handling stressful situations. As I always like to say, I am myself's own greatest critic. I constantly review situations I have been in previously on the harbor, incidents that I've experienced as well as aided in, and I believe I constantly make myself better through every new situation that I experience. A perfect example of that would be when I assisted in the Hull Harbor Master with a missing person who drove their truck, unfortunately, into the hull gut. During that time, I was tasked with the responsibility of not only making sure that I myself could handle that type of situation, but I also had the opportunity to assist in making someone else's day who unfortunately did not end how we wanted to, but I had the opportunity to aid in making any type of person's situation at least better than what it currently was.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And what skills do you feel you have that would most benefit the Hingham Police Department?
I believe my most important skill that would benefit the Hingham Police Department would be my compassion. My ability to be a great listener, to hear what individuals want to say, to be an open ear, shoulder for them to come to and share their woes, and to be able to talk with someone, not just to get answers or support, but to be there, to be recognized as an individual, as who they are, and to understand that what they're going through is only temporary.
Excellent. Further questions? Okay. We've certainly done a lot for the community already, and we appreciate that. Is there anything, any questions for us or anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. The only thing I want to mention is just thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's been a pleasure speaking with you.
Excellent. Thank you. Nice meeting you.
So do we want to have all three of them come in? We can just...
Sure.
I think they...
Did they leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be double check.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, you can relate to them that we'll obviously consider, go through our notes, consider this, and probably take up the vote next week.
Meeting probably be on Monday.
Yes, Monday, the 8th.
Monday, the 8th, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from members of the public on that process? Okay. All right. I'm actually going to move to public comment because after we, when we go into executive session, we're not going to come back. So are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on something not on the agenda this evening? And let's move to Town Administrator Select Board reports. Art?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Michelle?
Just a quick one. So the warrant for the 2024 annual town meeting is now available on the town website, and hopefully will hit people's mailboxes mid to late next week.
Excellent. Thank you. That's exciting. Tom?
Nope, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Bill?